Good evening, everyone. It being 7:00 PM on the 20th day of October 2025 in the town of Grafton, I call this annual town meeting to order. Thank you all for coming out tonight. My name is Dawn Anderson. I am the town moderator and I respectfully ask that I be addressed as Madam Moderator. Before I begin, I want to do an audio test to check the sound in the commons area. Can you let me know, Dave, if they can hear me out there? We're good? Testing. Are we good? I can hear Dave. They cannot hear us in the common area. Also, these lights are blinding. If we could take it down a notch. So while they're getting that sorted out. No food or drink is allowed in the auditorium during the meeting. Shouting or outbursts will not be tolerated at any time. Visitors associated with boards or committees may sit with those boards or committees if they have cleared it with me before the start of the meeting. If you would like to speak on an article, please come forward to one of the microphones at the front of the auditorium. If you are unable to navigate to the microphones, we have a wireless microphone available. Raise your hand and call for a point of privilege and a wireless microphone will be brought to you by our town administrator, Evan Bressad. Thank you, Evan, for volunteering. Please remember to state your full name and address every time that you speak. And remember to speak as closely to the microphone as you can so everyone can hear you. And when you're speaking at the microphones at the front of the auditorium, I know your instinct is to want to face the audience, but when you turn, then they can't hear you. So just get right up close to the microphones. And a quick reminder that anybody who wishes to ask a question must direct all their questions through the moderator and I will navigate, AKA moderate, the discussion. Closed captioning for tonight's town meeting is provided by GCTV. And how are they doing? Okay, good. Any luck on getting this light out of my eyes? No? Okay. I invite the Chair of the Select Board, Andy Jefferson, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, for one nation undergone indivisible, renewed with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Did everyone get their remote control? Excellent. Let's do a quick test. Press 1 for yes and 2 for no. Yes.
Which one do you want us to do?
Yes. Press 1. I still have 3 noes. Now 4. Okay. 5. Okay, everybody press now.
Now. Press 1 again. 2.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, do you have the total number of registered voters at this time?
Seventy-six.
There are seventy-six at this time. Thank you very much. My first order of business is to appoint Dave Robbins as my deputy moderator. Thank you, Dave. I have some announcements. The town of Grafton is inviting all interested individuals to apply for consideration to be appointed to the Charter Review Committee as mandated by the town's Home Rule Charter. This committee plays a vital role in examining the town's governing structure and recommending any necessary changes or updates to ensure that it meets the evolving needs of our community. The Town Home Rule Charter requires that a review of the charter take place in the years that end in a six. This review will help ensure that the town's governance remains effective, transparent, and responsive to the needs of its residents. The committee will be tasked with assessing various provisions of the charter and making recommendations for potential revisions to improve the functioning of our local government. The town is seeking a diverse group of volunteers to ensure a broad range of perspectives. Committee members will be expected to attend regular meetings and participate in the review and recommendation process. The committee's work will culminate in a report which will consider any proposed charter amendments. The town of Grafton encourages all residents with an interest in improving local governance to apply. This is an exciting opportunity to contribute to the future of the town and help shape its direction for years to come. More information will be shared in the coming months on the Town of Grafton website, Some introductions. Evan Bressad, our town administrator. Assistant Town Administrator William Blake is behind me. Our town attorney, Chris Brown. Our select board is sitting on the stage to my right and our finance committee is sitting behind me on the stage. And I would just like to remind everyone that I did invite them to move forward and I tried that at a meeting a few years ago and they didn't like it and they asked to go back into the dark recesses of the stage. On October 8th of this year, Governor Moira Healy issued a proclamation which I would like to share with you all as it relates to why we're here tonight. Whereas French diplomat, historian, and philosopher Alexis de Tocqueville stated, "Town meetings are to liberty what primary schools are to science. They bring within it the people's reach," emphasizing the significant role of town meetings within society. And whereas town meetings have served residents both for routine matters and in times of crisis by coming to public judgment on matters of self-governance. And whereas the notion of participatory democracy was a foundational rationale for the American Revolution. And whereas town meetings have embraced the inalienable right to self-determination practiced by local communities in the Commonwealth for over 400 years. And whereas revolutionaries learned to engage in deliberation with each other to further their community's causes and pledged their lives and liberties to the principles of self-governance in their efforts for freedom. And whereas the Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution were crafted by town meeting members who sought to bring forth the precepts of participatory self-determination and democracy to the scripture of our founding documents. And whereas the town meeting legislature and principles it embodies are as vital and relevant today as they were amidst the founding of our nation. Now, therefore, Moira Healy, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, does hereby proclaim October 8th, 2025, to be Town Meeting Day. I was pretty excited. For those of you who were Town Meeting regulars, you may remember that at our spring town meeting, I shared with you the spark of a revolution initiative that we at the Massachusetts Moderators Association had launched to celebrate the upcoming semi-quinqucentennial. Oh, thank you. And all of you very patiently sat and listened as I shared how Grafton's town meeting supported the events leading up to the American Revolution. I'm proud to share that this initiative was very well received across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and that a governor's citation has been conferred upon the Massachusetts Moderators Association in recognition of our contributions. This will be presented to our members at our annual meeting in November. I want to take a moment to thank you. The citizens of Grafton for taking the time to be here tonight. As I said last spring, town meeting today sets salaries, appropriates money, and votes on our local bylaws and charters. But they also serve as a reminder of the virtues and responsibilities of self-government, and that is worthwhile. And with that being said, I invite our town clerk, Amy Berry, to read the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Grafton, Annual Fall Town Meeting Warrant, October 20th, 2025, 7:00 PM. To any of the constables of the Town of Grafton in the County of Worcester, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Grafton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Grafton High School Auditorium located at 24 Providence Road on Monday, the 20th day of October 2025, at 7:00 PM and act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up an attested copy thereof on the official website of the Town of Grafton and the Town Bulletin Board in the Grafton Municipal Center at least 14 days before said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and the place of the meeting as foresaid. Given under the hands, the 23rd day of September in the year of the Lord 2025, Andrew Jefferson, Chair; Craig Dauphine, Vice Chair; Mark Alamo, Clerk; Anne Marie Foley; and Matthew Ofton. I have complied with the requirements of the above warrant and with the Town of Grafton bylaws by posting a tested copy of the warrant on the official website of the Town of Grafton and the Town Bulletin Board in the Grafton Municipal Center on the above date. Mary Ann Devray, Constable of Grafton.
Thank you. Let the games begin. We have 12 articles on the warrant tonight. Article 1, Mr. Jefferson.
Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from free cash $600,000 to the FY 2026 general budget for the purpose of funding the town's municipal solid waste program.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion as carried 78 to 1. Article 2.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Dauphine.
I move the town vote to appropriate $62,500 from available funds to pay a prior fiscal year bill to E.L. Harvey.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This article requires a four-fifths majority vote. All those... Is there any discussion on the motion? Sorry for that. The four-fifths threw me off. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion as carried by the required four-fifths majority, 80 to 1. Article 3.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Alamo.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $1,655,719 from the Road Improvement Stabilization Fund to the Road Improvement Capital Expenditures Fund for road improvement projects consistent with Chapter 90 rules and regulations as recommended by the DPW Advisory Committee and approved by the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion carries 82 to 0. Article 4.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash $100,000 for the purpose of funding the field data collection and engineering services for the Merriam Road Culver Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2. Voting is closed. I declare the motion as carried 79 to 2. Article 5.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain three parcels of land with addresses of 324 Providence Road, 334 Providence Road Rear, and 380 Providence Road Rear totaling approximately 41.47 acres. And as more particularly described and indeed recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Book 39110, page 289, for open space and recreation purposes under General Law Chapter 44B and Community Preservation Acts. And on such terms as the select board shall deem to be in the best interest of the town, said land to be managed by the Grafton Conservation Commission and to authorize the select board to enter into all agreements necessary to effectuate said acquisition and convey a preservation restriction that meets the requirements of General Law Chapter 184, subsection 31 to 33, and to appropriate $450,000 in land purchase expenses and $5,000 in legal and acquisition costs for a total appropriation of $455,000 to enable the town to acquire said parcel. And that to meet this appropriation, the sum of $455,000 to be transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund account with such funds to be expended by June 30, 2027 unless the Community Preservation Committee by majority vote to extend the time limit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this up for discussion, Evan Bressad is going to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So just a real quick, it's only six slides, we'll move right along. This project started back in July. I had met with Rob Aberg, the president of the Grafton Land Trust. It is president, right, Rob? Okay, just making sure I'm categorizing that properly. The czar of the Grafton Land Trust and the seller. And so we had a brief conversation regarding these parcels. I then brought this to the select board's attention beginning of August. End of August, we went before CPC, who voted to endorse the project. At the beginning of September, we went back where the select board voted to sign a purchase and sale agreement with the seller of the property for $450,000, with the condition that if the appraisal comes in lower, we can't spend more by law than the appraisal is valued at. September 11th, I had hired an appraiser on behalf of the board. And then in the beginning of October, including last week, we got our appraisal from... Well, we got our appraisal back at $455,000. And we went back in front of CPC to get that vote to see if they would fund the project to town meeting. That said, this is a purchase of land article. There are three separate parcels. For the purposes of appraisal, you count all of those parcels together, which gives us, as Matt said, $450,000 plus the $5,000 in ancillary costs. These three parcels are located along Providence Road and up against the Blackstone River. 324 Providence Road is the parcel determined to be developable. That is 1.36 acres that you'll see at the north of this picture. And then there is 334 Providence Road Rear, which is 19 acres, and then 380 Providence Road, which is 21 acres, which gives a total of 41.4, 41 and a half acres. You'll note that at the top of the screen there, that's the location of our Grafton sewer treatment plant. Across the river from the treatment plant is some Grafton Land Trust property that they've already acquired. And then on the extreme southern end, that is our Fairview Cemetery, just for direction. Amber, you want to go to that? There you go. So much of the property falls within the flood zone. So there are two different flood zones. One is the regulatory floodway that you see on the left with that red stripes, and then there's the flood zone AE, which is that blue color. There are also significant wetlands on portions of the property, mainly on the two larger parcels about the Blackstone River. Amber, you want to go to the next? Okay, thank you. There is some critical natural landscape property, again, at the extreme southern end of these parcels. And so that distinction, critical natural landscape, comes from the Mass GIS data project called BioMap, which is a project that is supposed to help determine areas of critical concern and areas in which you would want to focus your conservation efforts. So in this case, on that southern end, it identifies a large section of land that is minimally impacted by development but buffers core habitats. And there are some core habitats just over the border down the Blackstone River. All right. Okay. The Open Space and Recreation Committee completed a prioritization project which ranked 100... Nope, not 100. 1,037 possible parcels that the town could acquire. 380 Providence Road Rear came in 8th on that list. 324 Providence Road was 47th, and 334 came in 91st, which means that all three of these parcels are within the top 8% of parcels prioritized for acquisition under that project. We already... Okay. And then last but not least, so the proposed uses that were discussed with the select board and community preservation are conservation, open space, and recreation. Most of the conversation has come from these following bullet points, and I just want to go over those with you before we open up for discussion. So the cost of the property. The town pursued what's called the highest and best use appraisal, and that's what's dictated under the law for us to buy a parcel or property like this. The frontage along 324 Providence Road is developable, and that suitability has been reviewed by the building commissioner and the conservation agent. So in a deal like this, while you have a lot of backland that's in the flood zone and while it might have great conservation value, it doesn't have a lot of salable value for development. However, the frontage and the developable parcel do boost the value of the property. And so what then happens is you then aggregate all of that cost. So instead of being $50,000 an acre here and 25 there, you just aggregate it all as one. And so our aggregate price was roughly $1,000 per acre... Nope, $11,000 per acre. Sorry about that. We did look at this for affordable housing, and while 324 Providence Road has requisite frontage and is buildable, likely the cost to build here would be a bar to building affordable housing there. There's an important distinction to make in that buildability is not dictated by cost. So when a town looks at whether or not something is buildable, it's whether it's physically possible to build there, meaning it meets the zoning requirements, it meets wetlands regulations, all the rest of that. What we have for layers on GIS, what it doesn't do is tell you that it would be easily buildable, likely to be built, or cheaply built, right? Because there's too many variables for us to contemplate in that case. While it is unlikely that we may need future sewer expansion, it is right up against the sewer treatment plant. And while this will be handled under a conservation restriction, the state does look at the need that a community has if we were to have to carve some of that land out. It's likely to not be usable for anything other than conservation. However, when a community is up against a real hard wall with a sewer treatment plan or something that's of that critical infrastructure, there have been exceptions made via the legislature and the governor's office. There is the possibility that we could put recreational fields here. That was one of the first things we looked at. There are some difficulties at being in the floodway. However, that doesn't make it impossible, and we would have to do further study to see if that was the case. And lastly, the timing of this has come up a few times. And why do we need to purchase it now? So the biggest reason we would purchase now is that it's not in Chapter 61. What that means is that the town does not have right of first refusal should that parcel of land be offered to another buyer, which is how we've acquired conservation land in the past. The town does have a purchase and sale agreement already with the seller at that $450,000 price. And in just general, future's uncertain. We don't know what we don't know, and we have the opportunity to make this purchase now. So those were the underlying facts, and I think that's all I have, Madam Moderator.
And with that, I will open it up for any discussion on the motion.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
You can hear me?
Yep.
This is Rob Aberg at 43 South Street. I'm here this time representing Grafton Land Trust. The board discussed this article a few days ago, last Thursday, and in the interest of having information available to everyone here tonight... I just did what you said not to do. In the interest of having the information available to everyone, the board voted to have me ensure that the following facts are stated before we have our vote. So this south Grafton property meets the trust criteria for acquirable conservation land. It has both banks of a stretch of the Blackstone River, a segment of the historic Blackstone Canal that would then be preserved. The Land Trust property has a lock from the canal that people can see, so there's a historic element there. Scenic views, river habitat, and trails on the two rear lots that are already existing even though it says no trespassing. We did go with permission, though, from the seller. So it was already stated that a lot of the land is in the floodway. It's not in Chapter 61. The Land Trust looked into acquiring this property earlier in the year, including the commissioning of an appraisal from a MAI-certified appraiser. Our appraisal came in at $126,000 citing special permits for flood zones and a steep slope at the road and some adjacencies to Sewer Plant Cemetery as factors that contributed to that price. Since that price was far below the seller's asking price, we didn't have a deal and the Land Trust couldn't pursue this property further for the same reasons that we're not supposed to be buying things above appraisal to remain a charity that's not some, you know, money laundering scheme or something. So thinking the town could be interested in reviewing this property for multiple reasons, I introduced this to Evan as Evan stated. And we supplied our appraisal to the town September 21st as a source of information before the finance committee meeting on the 24th. So in summary, this property is great. It meets all the criteria for conservation. We had two appraisals done... The Land Trust had one, the town had another appraisal done. And I think, Evan, you had a quote at CPC in your material from Thursday that says... This is Evan's quote. "Having seen the lengths developers are willing to pursue as the easily developable land in Grafton is exhausted, I believe that it is unlikely one could make a valid argument that nothing could be built here." So kind of a belt and suspenders here that to put this in conservation would protect it and the canal and the views for as long as conservation restrictions last, which is supposed to be perpetual. So the Land Trust Board brought this out tonight to make sure that we had a fully informed vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I see someone coming forward. I see someone coming forward.
Scott Rosser to Stonewall Drive. I'm confused. The article, I may be wrong, Madam Moderator, but I believe that the article introduced on the floor is different when is printed in the handout. Is that true? And my second question is, the Finance Committee in the handout indicated they recommended it despite the fact that they didn't know where the money was coming from or what the land was going to be used for. And I guess my question through you, Madam Moderator, is, has the Finance Committee got any update or have they changed their recommendation?
Go ahead, Victoria.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Daphne.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, we have not changed our recommendation. We did meet before this to discuss, and no recommendations have been changed.
So you don't know where the money's coming from?
The CPC, no, that's, and that's a, that's a fair question. The CPC could theoretically fund it through a grant.
Could be.
That's right.
Okay.
The funding has not been allocated yet. The town must vote on it prior to that allocation being made.
Another question, Madam Moderator. Is there another offer on this land that we are, the town is competing with? Or is the town the only offer on the land?
Mr. Bressad?
As the land's already under a purchase and sale agreement, we're the only buyer. Whether or not there were other competing buyers before that, I, I don't believe so, but I'm not privy to all of that information. That's not something that we would know.
So, so the town is the only offer on that land?
We already have a purchase and sale.
Correct. In other words, we're the only ones that are looking to buy that land. We may have a purchase and sale, we may not. I mean, we, we obviously do, but we're the only ones that have an offer on the land. Nobody else has offered money for that land.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but again, I wouldn't necessarily know that.
So there seems to be a huge disconnect here between two professional appraisals. One that came in at about a $450,000 level and another that came in at about $120,000 level. There seems to be a lot of questions about what would happen with that land. I hear that it might be used for recreation. I'm not sure what kind of recreation you're going to have next to a wastewater treatment plant, but it would be interesting. There just seems to be a lot of questions about what's going on with this land. My suggestion would be we not purchase it at this time. If the owner really wants to sell it, let him put it on the market, and we'll see what kind of offer they get on it. But I'm guessing it's probably not going to go for $455,000. We'd be way overpaying for this land. And my recommendation would be you vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosser. Mr. Daphne? Trahan, I'm sorry.
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 She called me Daphne.
I had a flash, that's where you used to sit.
All right. Do I look that old? Anyway, Roger Trahan for Old Upton Road. I would listen to the Grafton Land Trust and vote yes. Thank you.
Shannon Phelan, 159 Old Westboro Road. The previous gentleman mentioned something about the wording being a little bit different in the handout. I, I believe, Madam Moderator, as you were reading something, it said something to the effect of that it would get transferred into, oh, there it is, the Grafton Conservation Commission. So does that mean, my question is, does that mean it automatically becomes conservation land unless, as Evan mentioned, there was some significant pressure to develop it for some other reasons? But it's, it's default conservation land?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Bressad?
Thank you. So that's the way the article is written. So the way we would pursue a conservation restriction would allow us to still have recreational access to the site. So if we wanted to put a field or something in the future. But all other uses would essentially go out the window. Under that protection, you have to have a really, really strong argument about why you're going to take land out of this type of conservation. And barring the fact that the town has no sewer capacity 30 years from now, and it's some kind of catastrophe, I don't see any other possible argument we would make to pull it out of conservation, which is pretty consistent with your conservation restrictions on other properties.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, so the question about the wording was that it is, the article as written did not include the said land to be managed by the Grafton Conservation Commission? That was included in the motion, but it was not in the printed article? Is that what the question was about? Is when you make the motion, you can, it gives you the opportunity to clarify some things that weren't explicitly said in the article, and that's why we have these conversations? Are there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Thank you, Mr. Rosser. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. I declare the motion has passed by the required two-thirds majority, 58 to 25. Article six.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15A, to transfer care, custody, management and control of two parcels of land with addresses 27 Milford Road and 27 Rear Milford Road totaling approximately 226.43 acres and as more particularly described in the deed recorded with the Worcester Registry, oh, sorry, with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Book 21834, Page 155, from the Select Board to the Grafton Conservation Commission for conservation purposes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And before I open this for discussion, Town Administrator Evan Bressad has a brief presentation.
Very brief, it's only one slide. So this is, as we said, 27 and 27 Rear Milford Road. The combination of those two parcels is about 226 acres. This was accepted by gift back at a special town meeting in March of 1996, but no intended use was listed in the warrant article language of the time. We have a lot of land like that that the town of Grafton owns, and we are slowly trying to work through categorizing everything correctly. And so this is one of those, those parcels. So we looked at, at the original language from 1996. We looked at the minutes from 1996. We also looked at all of the adjacent property. So the adjacent property to the west, north and most of the east is all held either as Grafton conservation land or by the Land Trust. So we have, you know, assessed that the intended use was for conservation purposes. It is also fairly steep, and it has a lot of ledge on the entrance point. The land was used, used to satisfy zoning for the development of the subdivisions that you see to the south and the west on this picture. And what we're looking to do is just clean up who's managing these properties and make sure that they're properly maintained and categorized so that we can do a good job for all of you. So that's all this is, and you'll likely see more of these coming in the near future at future town meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Bressad. Are there any questions on this motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. This article requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, press one. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by the required two-thirds majority, 76 to two. Article seven.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Daphne?
I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate with property owners to, the acquisition by gift, purchase or eminent domain, certain temporary or permanent easements to real property abutting Harding Street that are necessary to make Harding Street a public way.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. This is a simple majority. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried, 76 to two. Article eight.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Alamo?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate with property owners the acquisition by gift, purchase or eminent domain, certain temporary and permanent easements to real property abutting Faulkner Road that are necessary to make Faulkner Road a public way.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried, 76 to two. Article nine.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Foley?
I move that the town vote to accept the town of Grafton Master Plan as adopted by the Grafton Planning Board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, I invite Dave Robbins from the Planning Board to make a brief presentation. Do you want to talk here?
Okay, so I'm here to tell you very briefly about the master plan. This is not going to be a detailed exposition of everything that's in there, a couple hundred pages worth. You wouldn't sit still for that. So what is a master plan? It is something that the state law assigns to the planning board the responsibility of doing. And unlike some other plans that we undertake from time to time, such as the Housing Production Plan, the Open Space and Recreation Plan and others, there is no requirement that this be updated every so many years. Also, unlike other plans, there is no approval of the master plan beyond the planning board. Some of these other plans end up getting some approvals from the state. But that's not the case with the master plan. The purpose of the master plan is to put together kind of a snapshot of what Grafton is today, a vision of what Grafton could be in 20 years or so, and a plan to get from here to there, to adapt to the changing needs of the current and future population of Grafton. It's a little bit awkward for me to be reading. Okay, next slide, please. How we did this, how we went about this. As I noted previously, there's no well-defined schedule for that. The last time we updated the master plan was in 2021. We completed that update. So it's been almost 25 years. The Planning Board initiated this process in the fall of 2021, four years ago, by putting out a request or proposals for consultants to help us navigate the process and do a lot of the work. In the summer of 2022, we engaged the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission as our consultant for this. CMRPC proceeded through 2022 and 2023 to do a lot of data collection. They put a lot of work into that. We did an extensive amount of public outreach. We were very, very concerned that, very desirous of getting the input from as much of Grafton as we could to help us put this all together. So we did a survey. We got over 400 responses to the survey. We held several workshops, meetings, and, you know, made an appearance at several events to also informally talk to people and get their input. We created a master plan working group in the summer of 2023. The master plan working group worked for two years through the end of the process. And finally, this past June, the Planning Board reviewed and approved the master plan. So paraphrase a little bit from the vision statement that we put out. There's a handout that you, the entire vision statement is, is shown in the handout. Very briefly, we, we saw Grafton as a thriving mid-sized town with a small-town feel. We saw Grafton as a place with housing for families of all income levels, safe streets for pedestrians, cyclists and drivers, a strong economic base. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, we saw our, our vision was that Grafton would continue to balance growth with preservation of natural landscapes and cultural resources. And what's actually in the plan, the, the bulk of the plan covers about eight major topic areas. For each one of them, there is a description and evaluation of the current state, of the current conditions and current trends that we see. There's a description of what the community would like to see. And this, again, is based very much on the public input we receive, what the community would like to see preserved, enhanced and improved. And finally, there are, it lays out opportunities and strategies for meeting these future needs, expressed in terms of goals, high-level goals, and under each goal, some objectives. Under each objective, some action items. And the action items really are, end up being the, you know, the, the spelling out of what we might actually do to move forward on this. The topics, very briefly, the topics that we cover in the master plan, housing and population, looking particularly at future housing needs based on population housing trends. This draws a fair amount from the Housing Production Plan. Economic development, another important topic. Their focus there is on diversifying the tax base and supporting local businesses. The next topic is transportation, which is a focus really on safety enhancements and increased support for alternatives to cars. We are, as pretty much everybody knows, we are, we are very much an automobile-centric town, and we see going forward a need to try to expand on that. Be more accommodations for pedestrians, bicycles, transit to the extent that that turns out to be feasible. A next topic, another topic is town services and facilities, which is basically the infrastructure and services the town provides and how these need to evolve to support changing needs and future growth. Next slide. The other, last four topics are open space and recreation, something that's very near and dear to many of our hearts. Preservation of open spaces, enhancement of recreational opportunities. This section draws very much on the Open Space and Recreation Plan that we completed about four years ago. We cover natural and cultural resources, looking at preservation of significant natural, cultural and historic resources. And then there's land use, which sort of brings all of this together. Based on the fact that we cannot make more land. For some reason, we can't seem to find any, any additional land. So we have to take the land we have and balance the competing needs for housing, for commercial development and for preservation of open space. for preservation of open space. And the last topic I'll mention is, the last chapter of the plan, is quality of life. Pretty much everything up to this point relates to quality of life, but there are some quality of life topics that weren't, aren't really covered by some of the other topics. So this chapter talks about opportunities beyond what's covered by the other topics for enhancing the quality of life in Grafton. We end up with an implementation plan. It's all, it's great to write a plan, detail it as you want it, and what often happens to plans is they get put on the shelf. So in the end of this, we lay, we lay out an implementation plan discussing the twenty-three goals, fifty-six objectives, and one hundred and sixty-two action items. And for each action item, there, it's described in terms of a priority, you know, some sense of when we should do this, timeframe, priority as how important it is, timeframe is when it might be done, some idea of what it would cost to do this, and very importantly, for each action item, who is going to be held responsible for doing it. It's not enough to have a list. One of the things I, reviewing the two thousand and one master plan, we had a hundred and ninety-five recommendations, but we didn't really have a way, you know, we didn't say who should do them. And it turned out we ended up doing about half of them anyway. But it helps to have, to know who is going to be taking responsibility for each one of those action items. And finally, the, there's a list of potential resources and funding sources for each action item. So that's where we are with this. We do plan, moving forward, to track the progress, to, you know, to have, and we really haven't, the Planning Department is working on this at the moment, but, you know, trying to set up a structure where for each one of these action items, we have a way to, to track it, monitor it, and also potentially to make adjustments as necessary. What we see today as the action items that we think are necessary may turn out in some cases, well, actually, we don't need to do that. We need to do something different. I'll give you one example from the two thousand and one master plan. We had a recommendation to create a municipal facility combining the library, municipal offices, public safety, in a whole new municipal building somewhere. The plan never really figured out exactly where that should be, but we thought, we thought that was necessary at the time because we thought the current municipal center would need to be converted back into a school, so there needed to be someplace else. Well, turns out, the recommendations related to that didn't need to be done because we did not, did not need to convert the municipal center back to a school. So that's the kind of thing that sometimes happens with a plan like this, that we need to have a little bit of flexibility. So for more information, if you want to really dig into the plan and read all the details, there's, there was a handout that has this information as well, but you can visit the Planning Department's page on the town website, click on the QR code on the screen or in the handout. You can read the whole plan. You can read all, a lot of the documents that went into the development of the plan. If you want, you can read, you can view and read the minutes for all of the meetings of the master plan working group in the agendas and minutes section of the town website. Next slide. And my last remark is to acknowledge the efforts of everybody who contributed to this master plan in one way or another. The Planning Board, of course, which is sort of overall responsibility for it, municipal staff, particularly Fiona Coughlin and the Director of Planning, who was, really, really took the lead from the staff perspective. A lot of the other town departments contributed to this, contributed information, explaining what they're, what they needed to, CSIs needed to be done. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, of course, that did a lot of, a lot of the work, data collection, research, writing. The master plan working group, we had twenty-three Zoom meetings over the course of two years, which, you know, well, once, once a month. We started out with twenty-seven members, which I thought was really cool because we had, that, that showed me the level of interest that we had in the participation in this. For various reasons, some of the, some of the working group members had to drop out along the way. Eleven of us made it all the way to the end. And I don't want to forget to thank all of the members of the public who gave us their input, their, expressed their desires, and contributed immensely for this. So it's, it's the work of a lot of people, and I'd love, I'd love to have you all read it, but I can't read it to you while I'm up here. You wouldn't, like I said before, you wouldn't sit still for it.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has passed, seventy-four to three. Article ten.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Dofne.
I move that the town vote to amend Section two-point-one, uses and structures, Section four-point-two-point-two, off-street parking schedule, Section five, special regulations, Section six-point-three, regulations, Section seven-point-four, use regulations, and Section three-point-two-point-three-point-one, use regulation schedule of the Grafton zoning bylaw as printed in the fall town meeting amendment packet, and further to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, Dave Robbins will be back from the Planning Board to make a brief presentation.
Dave Robbins, again, ninety-two George Sherwood. I really, I wasn't planning to go through this entire presentation unless somebody has a lot of questions, but I will point, I will say that the Planning Board held a public hearing on this proposed amendment and voted to recommend this to be passed with the amendments as noted in the amendment packet. Very, very briefly, the purpose of this is to align the town zoning bylaw with the state law that was recently passed regarding accessory dwelling units. We chose not to do anything more than what we felt was the minimum necessary to align with the state law. There are other things, other aspects of this that have been discussed and likely will be considered in the future.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Simple majority. It's ZBA. ADU, sorry. Because it's related to the ADU, accessory dwelling units. It is a simple majority. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried by a simple majority, sixty-six to three. Article eleven.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to appropriate four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of funding designer services for the replacement of the roof at the Grafton Middle School.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, the Director of Operations for Grafton Public Schools, Frank Rothwell, will be making a brief presentation.
Thank you. Frank Rothwell, Director of Operations, Grafton Public Schools. Can we start with the second slide? So we're asking for the approval of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for design services related to roof replacement at Grafton Middle School, formerly Grafton High School, over my right shoulder behind me. I'm gonna, I plan on defining the need, explaining the cost of design services, what those design services would include, and then wrapping up with potential state funding. Grafton Middle School, much of the roof on Grafton Middle School is the original roof. It still exists. There may be some layers on top, but that original roof still exists. Over time, different roofing systems have been added to extend the life of the sixty-two-year-old roof, and all stopgap measures have been exhausted, and a new roof is required. All school roofs were assessed in the spring of twenty-twenty-five. In the assessment report, which is now located on our cover page of the district website, that the GMS roof is, quote, "in dire need of replacement," and also, quote, "catastrophic failure and other health dangers are dangerously evident on the roof if replacement is put off any longer." Design services, the cost, the Massachusetts Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, most people refer to as DCAM, recommends dedicating around nine percent of the total anticipated project cost for design services. The total estimated cost to replace the roof at Grafton Middle School, which is actually four different roof structures, would, comes in a little bit under five million dollars, and eight-point-nine percent is the estimate we have for what it would cost for design services. Design services include a study in certifiable building study done on the building, design, development, construction documents, the full architectural scope, including structural, mechanical, electrical, and hazmat, bidding and procurement documents and support, construction administration, where they're coming out regularly and checking on the work that's being performed to make sure that it meets the specs that they have written into their plans, quality control and coordination, and administrative costs. There is potential state funding. The project, though, to be clear, needs to be completed with or without that state reimbursement, but the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, offers competitive grants for roof projects. Historically, it's approximately up to fifty percent reimbursement for selected projects, and we'll be exploring those funding opportunities. They've just been, gone through some transitions as to how often they offer those reimbursements. We're hoping that they open up soon, preferably in January. That's it.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. This is a simple majority vote. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. I declare the motion has carried, seventy-five to four. Before we address the last article on the warrant, I want to take a moment to recognize the amazing, hard-working team of people who helped put our town meeting together. Our Town Administrator's Office, Evan, William, Cindy, and Amber. I'd like to particularly thank William Blake for postponing his honeymoon so that he would be here to support this town meeting, and he's not going until Friday, even though you got married like almost a month ago. Fiona Coughlin got married on Saturday. Congratulations, Fiona, and she is on her honeymoon now. I'd like to thank our Town Clerk's Office, Amy, and all of our election workers. Our Select Board, the Finance Committee, Town Council, Chris Brown, Grafton High School for hosting, GCTV for broadcasting and recording the event. Thank you, Bill and Bob. And Evan, I'm sorry you didn't get to, you know, bring anybody a microphone tonight.
I know. I put my running shoes on.
I know. And he, he actually has mentioned that when we first started doing the wireless microphone, I didn't have anyone to run it, and he got to go out and hand out the microphone, and it was for a very well-attended meeting, and he said it was one of the most fun nights he had at town meeting, and I was hoping to give him that opportunity again, but, you know, it is what it is. So Article twelve is a citizen's petition. The citizen has asked that the motion be withdrawn. With no affirmative action being taken, we shall proceed to adjournment. For those who have placed bets, it is one hour, five minutes, making this my shortest town meeting since I was first elected. I will entertain a motion to dismiss by voice vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? I declare the meeting dismissed. Good night. See you in the spring, and please remember to return your remote controls.